This is Minutes, a recording from the work session of May 7th, 5:00 PM.
I was waiting for Jimmy and Heather. Oh, okay. Well, there's Jimmy. I'd like to wait for him. Okay. We'd like to call the work session to order. Everyone is present. Heather Rowe is here, but she's just not at the table right now. First item on the agenda are the consent agenda, which is the minutes of the work session and close session of regular meeting. Thank you. One thing that we do have on the agenda is a revised second reading for the recreational marijuana that the attorney's office distributed. Is there any other changes, Karen?
No.
Okay. No other changes. Okay, so on the minutes, I did request some more information on the discussion for the work session in regards to the policy, social media, social media policy. Yes. So, we can table it until we get it, or we can just make it more inclusive? Did you get my?
Yeah, I can go back and add.
Can you go back and add? Okay, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I didn't know. So, we just wanted more discussion in that.
Madam Chair, I would agree. Because I know my, and I agree, I was talking about social media posts, but I know I specifically talked about Twitter at that point, so particularly how some companies or either individuals say that their Twitter remarks are not, you know, on behalf of their employer. So, that is what I was talking about right there, so.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Yep.
Well, I just asked that we include more comments, because it didn't, there was more, a lot of good discussion on it, and I know that trustee Gerald Rowe had brought up what they did at U of M, and I know that our deputy clerk stood up, because she's on that committee and talked about some things, and I just want more information in that section, and Clerk Rowe's going to add that. There was one other thing about the lights and what's, the two light poles and adding a camera.
And then, there's a camera already there.
Right. Right, and the minutes reflected that you welcomed cameras, but there's already one there.
You want to put that in there? Is that what you're saying, it wasn't in there?
Right, it wasn't in there. Because we came to that conclusion, and it also said that we would, the residents would be notified in the area of the new lighting fixture.
Yeah, and I've tried three times, so, and they're never home. I went during the day and the evening.
Okay, all right, I didn't, that's the part I didn't know who's going to follow up on that. Thank you for doing that. Any other?
I actually, after I looked at it, I don't, it's going to be far enough away in their house, the way it's turned, it's really not going to have any impact on, yeah, it's like maybe light up the corner of their backyard, but not their house.
And they could, can they put a reflector?
They're so far away, it's not.
A deflector?
They can, but it's so far away, you're not, unless I'm totally wrong, it's a long ways away, because you have the house, and then you have like some right away, and before the street light will go at them. But I did stop by their house three times, though.
Well, then we try. You might want to mail something to them, I don't know. The, we have old business on the recreational marijuana establishment, but before we go to that, we do have Megan and Charlotte are here in regards to the first reading of the proposed ordinance for the conditional rezoning text amendments. Is it all right with the board if we move that item up?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, in your packet, you have a proposed amendment that was recommended by the Planning Commission. This was really brought on, the township had its first application for conditional rezoning, you'll recollect, last year with the tennis facility that went in on Michigan Avenue. And at that time, when looking at the zoning ordinance, it does not specifically have an approval process for conditional rezoning. So, that's the reason that these amendments are in front of you tonight. Just to give you a little bit of context of what a conditional rezoning is, if that's all right, is that it authorize, it's enabled by the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, and what it does is it allows a property owner or their authorized representative to voluntarily, and that's the key thing, voluntarily offer conditions on the rezoning of their property. So, it comes from the applicant, it cannot come from the municipality. And only the property owner is permitted to offer, dictate the terms of a conditional rezoning. But what this tool does allow, though, is that if a property owner wishes to limit that, and often they'll find that if they limit it, that's their rezoning probably will be more likely to be passed, that they, you can restrict it to various things, either uses, setbacks on the site, you can attach it to a certain site plan, there's a variety of things that they can voluntarily bring. But it's been a much better tool for many municipalities, rather than just kind of, when you're rezoning from one zone to another, you have to look at all possible uses, and then when you have your planner, your consultant, like me, standing in front of you, I will not only tell you about what the thing is as proposed, but all the other possibilities that you're opening up the door for. So, this gives an opportunity for an applicant to voluntarily make a smaller policy door for a change on their property. And so, what is proposed before you is an additional section 2705, and that sets forth the authority to consider a conditional rezoning. It establishes the conditions that may either be offered or withdrawn at any time during the process. It confirms the procedure, so then it's clear to everybody who are considering that conditional rezoning, and that's the same as any proposed amendment to the zoning map, except that more specific information up to and including a sketch plan can be submitted to illustrate those proposed conditions. It establishes the additional criteria for which shall be considered for the approval of conditional rezoning. You have this, this is a different, there's some different things that you'll need to look at when you're looking at, rather than a straight rezoning or zoning amendment. And it requires that the conditional rezoning be noted on the official zoning map, and that a conditional rezoning agreement be recorded, and also there are details in the proposed amendment about what should be in that conditional rezoning agreement. Also, it allows the board, and the state law does this, to place limits on the time of approval. So, it's one of the few times where a municipality can put a sunset clause on something. What we'd like you to note, though, on that, is that if the sunset clause, if the sun sets, so if your time limit ends, then you have to go through a rezoning process, either at the applicant's request, at applicant's request, or your township initiated request to put new zoning on it. It just, it doesn't revert back, you'll have to go through a due process to get to that, to put different zoning on it. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, and if you, if there are any details or clarity, or broader things you would like to know about the proposed amendments.
Questions are coming. I know, seeing from the planning. And this came about because of, we had the tennis facility.
Yeah.
And we realized we didn't have a, an ordinance to do this. So, I'm just going through the notice of the public hearing, I'm just going through the process. They file it with, of course, a planning department, and then it goes to the Planning Commission first, just like every other rezoning.
Just like every other rezoning.
Yeah, and then written statement, listed condition, and it expires in?
The applicant can voluntarily say when it would expire, so there would be some that have been 10 years, some that are two years, that's one of those things that's volunteered.
Like, in that case, we knew exactly what it was, and they could only use it for their sketch plan, and the tennis facility was a little quirky, because we don't have any clear. So, what other examples of conditional rezonings could happen?
So, it could happen that it is, let's say it's a conditional rezoning to B3.
From?
From, from I1. I1 to B3, or from a multifamily to B3. Let's take multifamily zone to B3. And then somebody wants to put a sit-down restaurant in there, but this wouldn't, because this is right adjacent to residential, it wouldn't be appropriate for some other allowed uses, like a fast food restaurant, or a car dealership, or things that are allowed in that B3, that you wouldn't want there. So, the applicant can volunteer to say, "I will restrict the uses of this property to just, you know, restaurant or neighborhood commercial retail." And then they would list those out, and they would look at that. Also, sometimes it's been, there was an example of a conditional rezoning in city of Ypsilanti, where it was an old school building, and it was reoccupied by someone who does school pictures. And so, they had to be rezoned to an industrial in order to accommodate that use, but the building that they were reoccupying didn't meet the setbacks of that zone. And so, what they said was, "This is a conditional rezoning to this, we're reoccupying this building, we will not expand it." So, it can help with very specific situations where either the, the physical conditions on the site make it better for there to be some limitations, or there better to be some limitations on the uses.
And from a legal perspective, because it's not zoned or master planned a certain way, then we're not obligated as a Planning Commission and Township Board to?
Yeah, you would still, you would still use that master plan as a guide.
Pardon me?
You would still use that master plan as a guide to your decisions. The master plan would still have some weight in that, in a conditional rezoning decision. So, the master plan would still be a guide, but then you have current circumstances and whether things have changed, and then what you're really doing is taking the zoning and making it narrower for that particular site.
It's not an end around our master plan and stuff?
No, it's not an end around. So, you, as the Township Board, would be within, within, and of course, I'll defer to your Township Attorney, but would be within good legal standing to reject any conditional rezoning that did not match your master plan.
Okay. I know we also had another issue on Michigan, on East Michigan Avenue, Charlotte, if everyone remembers, it was the engineering company?
Yes.
For Autonomous. And that, this, would this fit into that?
That would have been a perfect tool.
Okay.
For that sort of situation, yes.
And they came to the Planning Commission, I think, didn't they?
Yeah, they came to.
Yeah, their site plan and everything.
They came to the Planning Commission, and then they were also concerned, that they asked for a rezoning to Office Service, because they were concerned about that B3 zoning not really reflecting what they were doing.
Correct, so that's a, that's a good example.
Yes, that's an excellent example.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or? Okay, then we'll go back to the agenda. Is it necessary for, would you like Megan to stay for the meeting for the first reading? Or, I mean, Planning Commission was unanimous, and, okay.
All right.
All right.
Well, thank you so much, and good luck.
Thank you. All right. We have general legal update, or do you want to just go to the agenda? Hang it either way. Okay, on the agenda, it was distributed a revision, a proposed revision, to the second reading of the prohibition recreational marijuana establishment ordinance, and it added a sunset, I think that's the term, provision that is in June 30th of 2020, which is based on the information and meetings that attorney's office had had, would give us adequate time in order to do an ordinance and put something in place, citizens' engagement and all of that. So, if anyone has specific questions on the ordinance, I would direct it to Attorney King and Attorney Winters. The first reading passed unanimously. This is just the second reading, and it actually added a, it doesn't say, it says cease effective on June 30th, 2020.
Madam Chair, I would just like to again thank Attorney Winters and Attorney King, just for, I know you're like laughing at me, but I really mean it, like, this is the first time that I've like felt settled on the issue after reading the revision that went out today. And I think that that comes from just, it's a really nice place of like mutual interest, like, it allows people who are concerned for valid reasons to have time to understand what the state's going to put out, and it also allows for people who are proponents of having recreational marijuana in the township, the same, you know, advantage there. So, I think it was a really nice way to use like an interest-based process to come to a workable solution, so thank you.
Okay, Mr. Winters?
I can provide some more additional background if you wanted to hear it now.
I'm good, I mean, I am, does any board members have any other comments?
Yeah, if you could please, Attorney Winters, additional background that you're speaking of.
The, and I know that the sort of common phrase for this 2018 ballot initiative is the recreational marijuana, and I've become more and more, trying to me myself, refer to it as that, the 2018 Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, because the words in that phrase is very important, where it says Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act. And as you know, from the previous resolution and from the board meeting we had months or so ago, this ballot initiative that actually was passed deals with six separate categories of potential commercial activities, only one of which is actually the so-called retail medical, retail marijuana or dispensary. We have six categories that range from recreational marijuana growers and sellers of up to 2,000 marijuana plants, there's a marijuana safety compliance facilities, which is designed to actually test the potency and the, as well as the presence of contaminants, processors, there's one category, micro businesses, allows the cultivation, processing, and packaging up to 150 plants. I mentioned the marijuana retailer, and of course, the recreational marijuana transporter, which transports the marijuana to and from marijuana establishments. So, at the time the ballot initiative was approved in November of 18, the state of Michigan was required to have in place a set of rules that was going to govern these activities by December 6th of 19. In March of this year, the governor, Governor Whitmer, appointed a gentleman to actually oversee the Marijuana Regulatory Agency, his name is Andrew Brisbo. And in late, mid-April, I attended a meeting where he spoke at that meeting to primarily individuals who were in the industry, either as attorneys for processors, growers, retailers, and there was a few people, maybe like myself, that were there in regards to understanding from the standpoint of municipalities. During that meeting, the major takeaway, and it's going to come to fruition pretty quickly here, is that the state of Michigan is going to enact what they have referred to as the emergency rules, that are going to govern these six categories, and those emergency rules are going to go into effect in June or July, which is why I picked June 30th as a midpoint. Those emergency rules are going to be the initial guidelines under which applicants can seek to become a licensee in one of those six categories. These emergency rules will expire in six months, but will be renewed automatically by the state for an additional six months for a maximum of one year. In fact, I think Mr. Brisbo was quoted as saying that one reason they wanted to do this was to have communities to have the time and notice to understand how these could impact their communities, zoning, et cetera. After one year, the state's required to have in place the final set of rules that will be adopted by LARA. So, the day they, the emergency rules expire is the day in which the new rules come into effect. During this time period, after the June declaration or the publication of the emergency rules, three months later, the state will start accepting applications from those individuals who wish to have a license in one of those six categories. That application process will start either in September or October, depending on when they publish the rules, and the state will take anywhere from three, four months, whatever it takes, to vet those licensees and applicants. So, it may not, it may not be until the end of the year, at the earliest, or beginning of the year of 2019, that anybody is going to actually have a license in any of these six categories. Right now, I think there may be some perception that if you were given a license to operate recreational marijuana retail store, that you could start selling the product immediately. That's not true. What's going to happen is the state is probably, this is coming from everybody in Lansing I've spoken to, and all the attorneys who represent the marijuana industry, the state more likely than not is going to license first the growers, the ones who do the testing, and the ones who do the transportation, because they're not going to allow the retail marijuana to sell marijuana that was grown for the purposes of medical marijuana. And so, there's no product to be sold by any of the retail establishments that have yet to be licensed until there's been the initial planting, harvesting, testing, transport, et cetera. And so, during this time period, as you know, there's probably over 400 municipalities that have opted out, because they don't know the rules. It just seemed to me right now that now that we know that the emergency rules are going to be published in a matter of weeks, and now that we know that there's actually going to be a year for those rules to be in place, that our ordinance, maybe one of the first ones in the state, that would say, "Okay, we are going to opt out, but we're going to have a legitimate timeline in which for us to review the rules once they are published, determining which of the six categories that are going to be regulated should be present in the township, and which of those six should be zoned, and which zoning district." This allows for the township to, number one, keep their eye on the process by knowing that they have a year to actually make this decision. At the same time, it shows full transparency that the township's intent is to proceed in a good faith and manner. At the same time, there are a number of different individuals, groups, stakeholders, who can provide some educational benefits to the board in regards to what, what does actually a testing facility look like? Where should that be located? How many people would that employ? What would a transportation station look like? How many trucks or buses would be employed or be there to transport from one facility to another? What would a potential grow-up greenhouse farm look like? Those are all legitimate questions in regards to even the marijuana industry in this state, because nobody has seen the rules, no one has an application filed, and no one has a license, or will have a license, probably for at least six months. Again, I think this may be one of the first ordinances they've approved that would actually set the timeline. I think the ordinance revision should have said June 30th, I don't know if it said June 20th, I think it might be a typo, I don't know. If it is, I apologize. But it should be June 30th. The reason why I picked June 30th is because, again, Mr. Brisbo was kind of holding his cards close to his vest, he said the rules will get published either in June or July. Well, that's about a 60-day swing, so June 30th seemed to be a logical date to pick, and we now know those will be in effect for a full year. And they intend, when I say they, the state intends, to continue to tweak those rules during that time period, and I'm convinced that by the time those rules are set to expire, they will have in place the LARA rules that will be the permanent rules going forward. So, I feel very comfortable in at least making the recommendation that you have your ordinance proceed and have a sunset provision, because that way, all the interests are going to be viewed in a way that allows you to make the best decisions based upon the categories, based upon the information that's coming in. And again, this is far more than just the retail portion that a lot of the attention gets focused on. There's five other categories that have significant presence. In fact, again, it's the expectation that those will be the first ones that will be licensed in this state, because you can't have a retail trying to sell recreational marijuana for adults unless you have a product that's been grown, harvested, and more importantly, tested. There are a number of growers that have grown marijuana, that they find more and more, according to this place, the meeting I went to, where they've had a number of contamination in the product, they've had everything from molds to E. coli to mildew, and many other contaminated products or byproducts. So, the testing of this product is kind of a, another health safety measure that the state wants to get right. Don't pretend to know everything that's going to occur in the months ahead. There has been a number of issues as to how the state's going to handle, handle the vetting processes. They're concerned that there's been a number, there's, there's an extreme number of layers of LLCs before you get down to who are the real investors. And sometimes, their challenge has been so far on the medical marijuana side, is that the person who actually has the license in their, his or her name, may not be the one that has the operational, the operational control of the establishment. And so, there are, in fact, some of the, some of the initial tax dollars that will be garnered from this 2018 bill is going to go back to the state of Michigan to help oversee the enforcement component that will be also the responsibility of LARA, because right now, there are a lot of different investors, meaning from outside the state of Michigan, that have invested heavily, and again, just trying to do the background checks, determining who's actually got the operational control. All these things become a very, very important enforcement, as well as oversight by the state. So, I think the year is a fair length of time for the board to do its due diligence and do its transparency. And again, I feel very comfortable, based upon what I know, that this would be a very positive approach, and also be one where there's a prohibition on this for the year, but it also puts the responsibility and the, I don't want to say burden, but puts responsibility on the Township Board to do its due diligence, to find out exactly what board to do its due diligence, to find out exactly what... There's been a lot of people that, a lot of communities that wanting to have public forums, they want to hear from people in the community. They have other stakeholders who also want to be engaged. And I think that you could probably end up with some very, very smart zoning ordinance amendments when you have full engagement of all people. And reasonable minds can sometimes disagree, as long as everybody understands that this is going, this is part of what the voters have approved, and how the township can look at this in the most enlightened way, as well as the most intelligent way. I think you're doing your duties as fiduciaries of the township. So I didn't mean to pontificate so much, but there has been a lot of information that we did not know back in February, that in a very short period of time, we do learn. And I know some of the board members are on this pathway in terms of thinking that this is something that could be put into the ordinance, and I think this is something that I feel very comfortable in recommending at this stage, based upon my assessment, and based upon my conversations, and based upon what I've heard firsthand.
Comments or questions?
Yeah, Madam Chair. Yeah, Attorney Winters, you mentioned they'll have emergency rules for six months, and they would have the option to extend for six months. Was that correct?
Yeah, but they made it quite clear, there's no question.
They're probably going to extend it. Okay. The second question I had was, why not have the ordinance expire in six months, and then once they extend theirs, then we extend ours? Would that...
I think it's, this is the board's decision, it's our recommendation. I know they're going to do it for a year, and I think the six months you run into the end of the year, there's always a lot of, township is shut down during the holiday season anyways. I just think right now, the smart, in my opinion, the smart play is to make it for that year. It doesn't mean you have to wait till a full year to come back with an ordinance. You might come back with an ordinance in April. But at the same time, the state's going to take advantage of those six-month emergency rules twice, and they want to get a... And again, I don't think you're going to see anybody, it'd be awful hard for someone to get a license in six months. If they don't start taking applications until September or October, they're not even going to have the license, even in position to grant one until the end of the year, first of the year. So that's just my opinion. And recommendation, but that's what I would recommend.
Thank you.
Other comments?
I had one, Madam Chair. I actually appreciate, thank you, Attorney Winters, for looking into the further information about this. I did want to read something that was, and thank you for actually quoting, the new executive director of the Michigan Marijuana Regulatory Agency, about a statement that he actually just made on May 2nd. To, if I have it correct, it is the State of Michigan Advice and Consent Committee, and Senator Kim LaRaza of St. Joseph's said in her town, it is in her district, where prospective recreational marijuana businesses are considering locating, but they don't have a list of what the rules and regulations will be. And she asks, is that something that you have now? And Andrew Bisco said, we are working on the first draft of the rules. The statute is passed in 2018. It went into effect December 6th. We have a year to take those applications for the facilities. Our intention is to release the first set of emergency rules around June, which is what you have said, and start taking applications about three months after that. The purpose for the delay and the advance notice is that we want to make sure communities have time to determine their approaches to their ordinances, end quote. So with that, I definitely agree with what you have stated, and I think it's a great idea. So thank you.
I think the biggest thing too, and I don't know how to do it, but maybe there needs to be more education, because people who speak about what was on the ballot was really not what was on the ballot, you know? And so the more information that we can provide to people, I think it would be helpful. Especially if you dive into the 10% so-called surcharge tax that goes to the schools, first 20 million goes to the state. I mean, it's like, it's not what people think it is. It just, they think... But the more information that people can be given, I think it would be helpful. And I really want residents, you know, to have the opportunity to comment. We did get signatures from a petition. It's not in the packet, but one neighborhood watch group.
Hawthorne, Oaklawn neighborhood.
Yeah. But it was all over the township, and I think that was, I don't, 60-some...
Five.
I don't, but, so I know that there's a lot of strong feelings both ways on it, and the key is to have the opportunity for residents to really hear whatever is proposed or comes out, and that they have input on it. Because I know several neighborhoods that absolutely know, you know? But it's just my opinion, based on the conversations I've had. I would like to have them to have the opportunity to say it. And I think taking a year will provide that opportunity, you know? We can do it sooner if we can get, but you don't know how to regulate something you don't have the regulations on. It's, like I said in the email, I know when a bar or a restaurant comes, or I know when a automobile factory comes, I know what to expect. I have no idea what to expect, or if I support a 2,000 marijuana plant facility, you know? Is there odor? Is there, I don't know. I'm not familiar with this stuff, so...
And there's a lot of intrigue even between the medical marijuana and the recreational marijuana issues. The medical marijuana stakeholders have taken the position, I think in some respects, that the medical marijuana is needed for those who have medical marijuana cards. And they do not want their marijuana to be pushed over to the recreational side, because medical marijuana is actually used for that purpose of why you got the card to begin with.
That's how it started.
So when you say, you know, six months, well, you know, even if you take the timeline of June, and three months later, you take the applications, and someone takes another three or four months to get a vetted license, you're already into the end of the year, January. And then, of course, the ones that are probably are going to go first are going to be the, again, the growers, the ones who are involved in the testing, the transportation, because they can't really have their product transported to the retail until it's been harvested, tested, et cetera. So this is all kind of going to unfold in a very, I think, very organized way. The gentleman that is head of the regulatory agency, Andrew Brisbo, I think he's a very impressive individual, and listening to him speak, in terms of what they want to learn, not only from other states, they want to do things, in their opinion, that might even be better, because there were some hiccups along the way in some of the states, via California, via Colorado. Colorado's been having to deal with a quite emerging black market of marijuana, because a lot of people don't want to pay the excise tax or the tax for that. And so once the regulatory focus shifts away to those who are licensed, there seems to be kind of a little bit of a vacuum left for those who wish to continue to grow, be without a license. And so there's a lot of different issues in play at the state level. And I think they have a pretty good handle on all the different, who the players are, and who the, exactly what they want to see happen. And I think they're going to partner with the communities in a very progressive way to make sure these questions get answered, because I think they want to get it right. And so I think that, I was very appreciative of the fact that I was able to attend that invite, because that was by far better than other people trying to just speculate as to what things might be. This gentleman actually is in charge of it, and as Monica just read, has already been quoted publicly of what he was telling the group I attended back in April was going to happen. So again, information is vital. I think everybody's on the same page in regards to what you're trying to achieve. And hopefully that gives, maybe this will be a model for other communities to have some kind of, to opt out, what you can do during that time period you opt out.
I know too, in our building department, we've had issues in actually looking at purchasing additional equipment, because some of the process that the home growers are using has CO2, is it? No, the carbonated stuff that you use for soda pop.
I think that's it.
Isn't it CO? Okay, what is it? C2O or whatever?
Sure.
Anyway, they were using that, and, go ahead, Mike, infusing it into the plant to make things grow quicker, and...
It's actually carbon, liquid carbon dioxide. It's the tanks that restaurants, that they use to carbonate soda.
Soda.
Apparently, yeah, not carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide. So apparently growers are injecting it into the soil to make the plants grow faster and bigger. And there's been incidents of first responders and others inspectors that have walked into homes or businesses, commercial businesses, where there's been leaking tanks. It's colorless, odorless, and it's heavier than air, so it just kind of lingers in the lowest level. You walk into a basement, there was an incident in Colorado recently, where a couple of firefighters fell out instantly, once they entered the basement of a McDonald's restaurant, where they had a slip and fall call. And that person had fallen out, and they walked into it not knowing. And so for $300, we can buy these detectors for our housing inspectors and others to help make them safer.
And then I know...
Because they're reporting that about one out of every 10 or 12 rental homes they go into has a grow operation in it.
And then another one, it was the odor was so strong, and one of our new inspectors, bless his heart, he didn't, he wasn't familiar with the smell of marijuana grow-up, because we are, and the residents are, it smells like a skunk a lot of times, what I say. But it, he wasn't familiar with it, and it really...
Made him physically ill.
He had to step out of the house that he was inspecting.
Yep.
And it had two kids in it, you know? And that's the kind of stuff that we can't allow. He had 12 pants per person. Per person.
Madam Chair.
So I mean, those are the, just half inches.
Oh, yeah, please.
So those are the kind of things, but I want to make sure that our employees are protected. And when you do the regulations, I hope the state tries to protect employees who work in those environments. And I'm not sure how we make our comments to them, you know, to have them encourage the state of Michigan to look at that, but I, you know, they need to think of everything, not just rushing into it, because it's hazardous. We've had explosions, we've had everything in the township, you know? And maybe they don't know as much as we do, because of our experience with it, and we can really help with protecting people. That would be one of my goals, you know, and the regulations at the state level, and of course, protecting our employees that are exposed to it, and residents, so... Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to, I don't know, sort of tail off of what you were saying about the education piece. And I think it's, you know, necessary that we educate and talk about what that, you know, what the ballot initiative really meant, all the taxing and stuff like that. But also, I mean, the situations that we're discussing now, like, people are doing illegal things. Like, those things aren't legal. It's not legal to have, like, CO2 leaking in your house. And so to just enforce and reassure residents that we, as a township, have always and will always care about the safety of our communities first, and we have zero tolerance for people doing stuff like that. But, period, as the law stands, and, you know, we'll know more once the regulations are out, but just because something is legal now, doesn't mean it's okay to do illegal things with it. The same way that alcohol has been legal, right? It's still not okay to give it to minors, or to sell it to minors, or... And so people are always going to, it's just human nature, you know? We're all sinful people, that's just how we've been created, and we're always going to, you know, be able to expect some people to not do the right things. And I think that as long as our township continues to promote a culture of safety and also inform people of what our standards are, then I think that would just be a great thing to incorporate into, like, education pieces. But also, just not to...
I did not know about this issue. It just came up because the building...
I mean, that happened, isn't that what happened over in, on Getagno? Yeah.
No, I'm talking about the...
It was a different...
That...
Well, in either of those, like, that's not okay. Like, we're never...
But that's how they do it.
Yeah. Well, that's how some people do it, who don't want to, you know, follow safety regulations and...
There are no regulations, that's what...
Well, there are going to be. And I just think that it's important for us as a board, this is my opinion, is to just approach it in a factual manner, which I'm not saying that's not factual, but not from a place of fear, from a place of, we're taking the reins on this, we're ensuring safety, we have zero tolerance for allowing people to violate our community standards. But not coming from a place of fear when we talk about it.
Fear of how it might affect you if you...
Yeah, or just, I think that when you come from a place of fear, especially as a board member, and you're talking about something that's new, and you're uncomfortable with it, it's a change, so we're all uncomfortable with it. But when we start talking about it in a fearful way, with all of our worries put first, and not like all of the good things that come out of it, I think that people really look at that, and are, you know, have an impression upon them, because they think, then, oh, Heather doesn't think it's safe, and all these things, rather than, oh, Heather thinks that we could, you know, ensure safety, and we're going to enforce that. Do you know what, it's just messaging, like, saying instead of, we're scared of these things happening, instead of that message saying, we're going to ensure safety, not we're afraid of, but we're going to ensure safety. Do you know what I mean? Kind of, no?
Yeah, kind of.
Okay.
That's okay, though.
Yeah.
There's a lot of laws that are, I heard what you were saying, there's a lot of laws, like, there's laws already on those carbon things. Did we know they were being used in grow-ups? No, I think that's what Supervisor Stomba was saying, that that's new.
We have to protect our employees.
We need to make sure that if people are doing that...
Which I totally agree with.
And that people are fined, or whatever the law says, when you violate that standard. The whole thing on protecting workers, there's OSHA laws, and I'm making an assumption that those laws will apply to every business. I don't think that just because you're a marijuana business, you don't have to apply to workers' health and safety.
I would not assume...
Like, there's an exception to the law, to OSHA laws for a marijuana business?
I don't know if they're aware of it.
No, but there's laws about breathing, and parts per million, and on probably every substance that you can imagine, including whatever's produced by marijuana, which a lot of it's the fertilizers and other things that make it...
Chemicals, yeah.
Right.
It's a chemical, the additives is causing...
So I'm sure there's this, I'm sure there's this, there's a standard on every chemical that exists for OSHA and exposure and stuff. So I'm thinking that OSHA would apply, and imagine that they're preempted from any OSHA laws. I mean, that would be, I don't think they have the authority for LARA to say, no, they don't have to follow OSHA standards.
I know filters for odor is, you know, is important. Me, I'll just speak for me, you know, because, and we have it at Yucca, you know, we had to spend extra dollars to make sure that it's a good filter, and, you know, and I don't know if they think that way, Karen. I don't know if they think of those things and how it affects a community, regardless of where it's at in the state of Michigan. That's all.
Right, but we have our ordinances.
And so does LaBona, but the filter they had didn't work. So you've got to, like, you've got to look at existing things that have happened in the past, and try to prevent them from happening in the future. And to me, putting those in regulations, and I don't know if they know about LaBona. Like, I don't know enough about what they...
LaBona was what a grow-up that smelled like?
It was a major grow facility for medical. And they had them put the filter on, because they thought that would work, and it didn't.
So it wasn't large?
I don't know. I don't, I don't know, but what I'm saying is, they just pay the fine. I don't, I don't know, but what I'm saying is they just pay the fine because they get fined on it, you know, for not having it. So, that's not the solution. That's all, I'm just trying to think of, I want Lara to think of how it could affect a community. That's all. And I'm not scaring them, I mean, I really want to protect the community.
That's what, I hear that from you. I know that's what you want.
Yeah.
But I, yeah, that's what I hear. And just recent, I don't know how I dovetailed off into that, it was just what you were talking about that triggered me to go there. But I did want to mention that Green Rapids has an interesting proposal for their marijuana, recreational marijuana, and I'd have to look more into it to, like, fully share with the board. But the gist of it was that their businesses that they'll allow there, they would get like, they would give preference to businesses who also had some community involvement piece with it. So, whether it was, you know, contributing some of their funds back to parks or, I don't know, giving so many volunteer hours to the township or to Habitat for Humanity or something like that, and sort of like directing them that like, yes, we're welcoming you here, we want your business, but we also want you to be ingrained in the fabric of our community by helping us move towards our 2040 vision and whatever that means. So, I think that, you know, looking at something like that would be really helpful to, and another way to incorporate residents and their concerns about, you know, ensuring safety in their communities and really, I don't know, putting them to work for us a little bit, you know, for our residents. That's what we need.
Well, yeah, and that'll come out of all of the discussions. And that's why we need time, right?
I'll send that to you guys when I, yeah, and that...
Madam Chair, yeah, I had a couple of questions, actually. And I don't know if Mike actually knows this, so I may be asking you a question that you don't know. So, when carbon dioxide get into the ground, does it affect the ground soil and also possibly storm water? I know, I'm sorry, but yeah, because, you know, I was just figuring environmental concerns.
That's a whole nother issue. You're talking about pre-treating it before you discharge it.
They're not doing...
I don't know the answer.
I mean, but if it spills, right? Because you spoke about basically, I think, in that incident where the firefighters went in into Colorado, right? And this is not fear, this is actual question, so...
Yeah, this was liquid carbon dioxide.
Right.
So, it's a heavier gas, as I understand it. The videos that are building inspectors, they were at a training session and they learned this stuff there and then brought it back to share with people. So, these were tanks that were leaking inside a commercial building, a McDonald's.
Okay.
And I have no idea to the answer to your question.
Yeah, I knew you probably wouldn't know. I know that's a big environmental question, but...
My assumption when we were discussing it was that this was being used in the soil of indoor grow ups.
Okay.
They're not in the ground.
Correct. Correct.
Yeah. Okay, all right, okay.
But these are all the kinds of questions that are discussed at, you know...
Yes.
When you formulate, but you just have to think of everything based on what you learn.
Right. And to Trustee Rose's point, you're right, this is just one of many different types of employee safety concerns that come up from time to time. Like, for instance, today I found out that during our very first rental inspections at a small apartment complex on Grove Road, we found 220 water heaters that were incorrectly installed without permits back in 2011. And they're going to have to correct them all now.
Water heaters?
Yeah, water heaters.
Yeah. Attorney Winters wanted to say something.
I just wanted to also supplement what I was saying earlier about why the 12-month is important. During that meeting with Director Brisbo, he made it quite clear that once the emergency rules have been promulgated for that six-month period, and they halfway through that period, they will start taking applications. As far as the state of Michigan is concerned, if they receive an application for one of these six licenses on September 30th, and they, from a community that has not opted out, that the state of Michigan is going to take the position that the date the application is received is the controlling date as it pertains to any community later on that would try to assert legal standing to try and deny that license. In other words, right now, that's another big reason why the 12-month issue is important to me. Because right now, if you did it for six months, say for whatever reason, that the ordinance that was going to expire somehow, if there was a few days in between the time when one ordinance expired and another ordinance went into effect, if you didn't do it exactly the same time and someone filed an application during that gap, that date is the controlling date for later on in any issues of legal standing. And again, I think that the 12 months, you know, this year goes, these years go by so fast, maybe because I'm getting older, it seems like it's going faster. It's like full throttle right now, it just seemed like the other day was Christmas time, here it is right now. It feels like, you know, it's not spring yet, but I know the calendar says otherwise. And before you know it, we'll be halfway through this year. And so, I don't think that the 12 months, quite frankly, is going to be spent waiting to see what's going to happen. It's going to be an awful lot of activity, awful lot of engagement, awful lot of the people that are going to be pushing forward here. But I'm just, again, the concern was, and everybody from the marijuana industry themselves, that I've talked to, have said the same thing to me, that, you know, they...
They understand.
They understand why your communities have no choice, and they have a choice, but they understand, in their words, why it would be a smart choice to opt out right now because they don't know what the rules are going to be as it pertains to their clients who actually have a strong vested financial interest. Because many of the people that started out in the medical marijuana industry are poised to move over into the Michigan tax regulation and taxation of marijuana act 2018. So, I think the 12 months, again, ensures there's no gap during that time period where somebody could, say I filed an application on a day or week when you didn't have an ordinance in effect, it just gives you that added assurance, if you don't need 12 months, don't take 12 months, do it in 10 months. But it gives you that added assurance that you're kind of at least, that the time needed to do what you feel is due diligence.
Then we can talk about how you want to proceed with the committee or...
Actually wasn't, and that's what, that was the second point, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, is I do think that anything after this point needs a working group of all residents, I mean, residents on both sides of this issue. So, that way that people can hear other opinions. I think that's key. Hopefully that what working group includes residents. And, you know, obviously, you know, township officials, their have you, but I just think it's important. I think that, you know, whatever rules are set, obviously by the state of Michigan, they'll be doing, you know, that. But I just believe that, you know, the vote said one thing, but in the same aspect, people interpreted a lot of different things in the ballot language. I actually have it, I'm not going to read it. But in the same aspect, because of that, I think that anything that we can do as a township as it relates to this issue, it would be great to have a working group of residents on both sides of this issue.
Right. And just one more point, I swear, because this came up. Like, there's a lot of people that we don't know who's in this industry and hard to find out who's in it and it doesn't matter to me, but if it's an employee or, you know, planning commissioner or board member, anyone, you know, we need to make sure that there's like no inside track. You know, it has to be above board and transparent and I, I don't know how to say it legally or technically, but we need to look at that issue as well, just to make sure that...
Madam Chair.
We're not, someone's not pushing that it's actually financially benefiting, yeah.
This is my last point, too, I promise. I keep promising Stan that I'm, it's my last point. But I also, just over the last week, have really taken a look into our election results from when Prop 1 was on the ballot. And it kind of came up because of the petition signatures that we received, and I just wanted to look at that precinct along with all of our other precincts to see, you know, how many people voted yes versus no. And it's really interesting and super easy to find on the E-Wash Chanel website. But the lowest precinct that we had that voted yes, all precincts voted majority yes. The lowest was 57% and that was Precinct 15. But Precinct 8, where those signatures mostly came from, it was 698 people or 74% voted yes. And so, I just thought it was really interesting from my knowledge to go back and look to see like, you know, what parts of our township, like, maybe those related to their areas of concern with like where businesses might go or, just to see if there was any relationship between that. And I think that, oh, and I don't have a marijuana business that I'm...
No, I'm not saying...
No, 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 I'm totally joking with you, Brenda.
But I was just thinking, like, that's probably another...
For the record.
Because a couple of people I've met that's in it, I'm like, oh my God, I had no idea, you know?
No, it's a good point.
And I understand your point about the statistics and people throw that, you know, that statistic around, but if you read the actual ballot proposal, you know...
I know, but democracy is democracy, you know what I mean?
No, but people didn't vote to have the facilities in their community. That's not what they voted on. What they did vote on, it says it allows communities to regulate it. You know, and then, yeah, I just think that when people make up, 69% of the people voted for it, I mean, I know things that I voted for, it's not why I voted for stuff, but they use that statistic sometimes, so...
Well, and I've heard that broadly about the Washington County statistic, that's why I kind of wanted to know ours alone, you know?
Yeah, I looked at it too. And I looked at it too. So, we're thinking a lot alike, but then when I talk to people who did vote for it because they didn't want people to be arrested and imprisoned for it, still don't want it in certain neighborhoods or, you know what I mean? And that's a different conversation. And by having a break, we'll be able to have those conversations, so... Clerk Rowe?
Yeah, I just, I think probably, listening to what everybody said and, you know, about the discussion and email that I sent out too about putting together a committee, but maybe one of the most important things that we do is just education. Because I think emails and the phone calls that we've gotten, I'm not sure about exactly what was said to the people who signed the petition, but they always, it's always about retail. I don't think the regular, just Citizen Joe knows that there's six various businesses or what those even are involved. Maybe it would be nice of us just to host, I'm not sure who those, maybe Doug, through his connections with GCIS, it's obvious some people up there, you know, have a lot of knowledge, just to even talk about what are those various businesses that we're opting out of right now and will be considering in the future sometime before 2020 June, whether or not we're going to opt back in on any of those. I mean, not for them and for us too, as board members, have to make a decision on exactly what those are and what do those look like and...
Yeah, we don't know.
You know, what I'm saying. But lots of, I mean, there's a lot of information out there from other places that we could, you know, people could come in and talk about at least what the six businesses are, you know, how they operate in other locations, I mean, even before we even know about, because I know people are always hanging it up on their retail, at least that's what I hear, is retail, retail. There's a lot of...
People on the south side that live by farms, they don't want...
One of the things I know that I've heard, that we've said, and I've even said it, which was a mistake, after I actually read the act, and I keep trying to bring it up again, but I can't find it. The act itself doesn't allow it in residential areas. We can't pass a rule or an ordinance that says you can. And it can't be close to schools. Now, we can pass an ordinance that makes the minimum, we can reduce the minimum that the state says by schools, which I can't, I'm already steeped, but it says where our area is zoned residential and only residential, none of these six businesses can go in there. I know I'd said stuff to people like, well, you don't want it in your neighborhood, well, you can't have it in your neighborhood under the law, none of the six businesses. So, that was news to me. And I think the thing that Attorney Winters talked on, I think that's actually in the law, because that kind of like scared me, trying not to be fearful, but I know when I read that, it was real clear that if, you know, when people apply, regardless of when they get their license, that's the ordinance that's in effect at the time. So, if people apply for a grow up in Ipsy Township, whatever ordinance that we have at that time is the one that they come under.
But if you don't have one, they can...
Right.
They can go in districts other than residential.
Whatever your rules at that time. And they're also, one of the things is that, I saw it maybe following a little bit of the liquor license permits through Lara, is that they, they'll have to, they have to get a permit from here too at the same time. I don't know if it's before or after, that's not clear, but the act itself says that they have to get the reference back to the local community in terms of what the community has or wants or any, well, it's not real clear, other than they have, that the local community, they do reference back before they make a decision on issuing from that or license.
Are we, are we good to move on?
Are people interested in the education thing at all or...
I don't...
As a board or not?
I don't, I don't have enough information to host, we don't, they don't know.
Madam Chair, I think that that can be included maybe as a working group and also informational. I don't know whether you want to do it as a, you know, whatever way, but informational that goes out to residents, I think that is important. I, you know, I think also the pros and cons of each of the six categories needs to be told to residents also. So, that would be my opinion.
Thank you, Angie. The next item on the agenda is, we're going to go number two, the request of Light Speed Communication to assign and transfer their Metro Act permit. Clerk Rowe distributed the application.
Yeah, the letter from Light Speed that's up right now indicated that the permit was attached and it, so, and we put it in a packet, but it wasn't. So, you actually have that thick stapled copy of the actual, their original permit. So, that's their request along with the state, the letter from our attorney who investigated, you know, researched it and stuff and said that it's, everything's, they have a right to transfer those right away, yeah.
And the map is the only thing again, but they'll give that, they're not doing that yet, right? The construction's not completed? That's what I couldn't...
This is just a different company, so I'm suspecting that the original map is still in, is part of the original permit process? Because this is just a transfer, the total permit, it's not a reapplication with new maps or...
Okay.
That's what was...
I haven't had time to read, to look through this.
Madam Chair, just make sure I understood it correct. If that's okay, thank you. Just want to make sure I'm acknowledged first before I keep speaking. So, if I have it correct, basically, and I may be wrong, so Light Speed Communication is assigning and transfer to Metro Fiber Net substantially all of, all of Light Speed's assets. So, if I have it correct, Light Speed is going to become Metro Net? Am I reading it correctly?
I haven't.
Oh, Fire, okay.
Metro Fiber Net LLC.
Okay, got you, all right.
They're taking over their permit.
Okay, all right, got you. All right, and so they'll handle the rest of their business operations from this point on out, you know, depending on if this is approved, I'm assuming. Okay.
And hopefully they'll be here, but one issue we had with one of the Metro, one of these people, Fiber Optic, is on Grove Road. They disturbed a large area and it wasn't restored. And then there was another area on the west side, and I don't know if the, looking at them Exhibit A that's attached, I don't know if, I don't think it was them, but we need to make sure that they, they don't come in and tear up the community, putting it in and not restore it, so...
There was a communication, and I'm not, remember, it wasn't this one, it was from the road commission that we got a copy of, that said that they weren't releasing whatever bonds to them because of that same issue.
Right.
Because they don't have to get a permit from us to go in the right of way, but they do have to get a permit from the road commission.
Well, they did get a permit from us, yeah.
I mean, not a permit to work in the right of way.
But a permit to do the work, so, and I...
To operate within our community.
It's the first time we've really had this, but it's been two in the last six months, so something's amiss somewhere with not restoring the land. Oh, three?
I think it's three. So, I don't know about that... So I don't know about that particular case, but I would, I would ask the road commission because.
Well, no, I'm going to tell whoever comes here tonight then.
Madam Chair.
No, I'm saying to get that corrected, it would be through the road commission.
Okay.
Because they're the ones where they float the bond and I, there was one of them they weren't releasing, they sent it, I don't know which one it is, and I'm not sure anybody's coming tonight that I'm not aware of.
Oh.
I'm not aware of.
I just wanted to, like, section 4.3 talks about the restoration of the property. Is that?
Are you in the applica?
Your permit.
That big packet.
The permit.
Yeah, they don't do it, they're not doing that.
I mean, like, this is their contract, so if I don't do something in my contract at work, then.
But what she's saying, what Karen's saying, it's in the road right of way permit.
Oh, that the road commission would have to.
Yeah, but, yeah.
Because we don't, like, even if they had, because they don't, we, we don't enforce that because it's not, it's a road, where they're putting it is in the road right of way, and that's what the road commission.
But it says shall restore.
Well, they have to, right.
So it doesn't matter if they.
But I mean, enforce, what I'm trying to say, I'm not explaining very well, I'm sorry. Enforcement agency is the one where they put up the bond, when they pulled the permit to go digging in the right of way, and that's what the road commission, and that's one of the emails that I saw on another company, not on this one, it was an email that they just sent out to us for general information saying that, you know, that you still had to do, like, they were trying to get their bond back and they still, it was a letter to them, which they copied us on, that said, you have, you've done this, but you still got to do A, B, and C, and D, and we will be, let us know when it's completed and we'll be re inspecting. I was just saying, if we've got a complaint on that through our building department or whatever, then we should contact the road commission.
But Heather's corrected, section 4.3, it says they shall restore. And it says if they don't, the municipality can go in and then they will have to reimburse us.
Saying it's there, but you don't have to do that because the road commission. Can't imagine where they would go that's not in the right of way. Maybe there's somewhere else they would go that's not in the right of way.
Well, I just think it's interesting, like, if it says that, and like, you're right, most of the places will be in the right of way, but then how can someone put something like that in the contract if?
Well, I'm not saying you can't enforce it, I'm just giving you the.
Are you guys laughing at us down there?
I'm just giving you the way to file, the way to resolve it, probably quicker than us going after them.
So you don't think they're going to be here?
Not that I'm aware of, Jenny's been working with them.
Did they say they weren't going to attend, or you don't know? You sent it to them, right? Yeah. Okay. This is indicative of the meeting. On number three, we have the request to approve the second agreement with the Washington County Road Commission for improvements in the amount of $304,000. This agreement is largely crack sealing, and the road commission has told us that if you do all these, and how many, I don't know how many, there's Gulf Farms, Nancy Park, Shady Knolls, West Willow, Turtle Creek, Paint Creek.
I think it's everything on there but Edison.
Well, but not all the subdivisions are on here.
Oh, I know.
In the township, right?
Right, no.
They said that it will make them last five years longer if you go in and do this in order to prevent the rainwater from getting in the cracks. So, and they swear that the reason our roads aren't lasting, and we're putting, you know, millions of dollars into it, is because we don't do this. So this agreement substantially all except for one street, which is Edison, is 83,900, and they're doing Edison because we're doing the speed traffic calming devices on Edison, so it makes sense to do Edison Street. Normally you see more repair and milling and overlay, this is 90%.
This is a maintenance contract.
Seal, crack sealing, yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Is that why we're not receiving as many matching funds? I feel like last year when we approved a lot of road projects, it was.
I think we used a lot of.
A lot more matching.
We actually used 2019's matching funds last year, Jim.
Okay.
Thanks. Good catch, yeah, that's.
That's right.
But I mean, the more, we pass a millage to take care of our roads, but we're still, you know, spending hundreds of thousands of dollars every year and it, but we do have pretty good roads. I mean, we have better, it's a good investment. Any other comments or questions?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to know, like, do they have an estimate of time or how, I can't even look at you seriously now, an estimated time for like how, how long it'll take them to do these repairs, like to disrupt our residents and their traffic flow? Because it's not like mulling over a whole new road.
Right.
It's going to be faster.
Yes. Oh yeah, much faster than. Because they're sealing the cracks and.
That big black goop down them.
And then it just, okay.
I think they put chip seal on it too, don't they? Just a goo or the. It's like Larry and Karen explained to me, it's like what they do to their driveway, when there's a crack, they put filler in it, yeah.
Well, water is the worst thing in the world because we live in a place that freezes, so water gets, and that's why a lot of times you'll even see in the roads, the water gets down and then it freezes, then when it goes down, they go back up, so if you keep the water out, you can make things last longer, sidewalks and roads.
All right, so pray it works, right? Number four is a request of Michael Enzick for authorization to seek legal action if necessary to abate the public nuisance for property located at 1594 Andrea. And, Michael? Want me to talk about it? It's a, I know, how does it get so trashy? I know.
Good evening. 1594 Andrea Street in the Sugarbrook neighborhood has been vacant for several months. Apparently the owner is deceased. After taking some time to track down what the ownership situation was, we obtained and then executed administrative warrant to inspect the property. This was in April 23rd of this year, resulting in the condemnation of the structure itself. We've been unable to locate any probate records where any interested family has opened a probate case on the property itself, and obviously looking at the photographs, nothing's been done to try to clean the property up. So this is one of those cases where if we do engage in circuit court litigation, we may have to recruit the help of the, help me, Mr. Winters, the public administrator.
Is it Washington County Public Administrator?
Public Administrator, yes, which we've done on several cases in the past where there is a deceased property owner and no interested next of kin that has stepped up to take responsibility. The other one is 1499 Grove Road, that's on the periphery of the Sugarbrook neighborhood as well, just east of Harris Road. It's been also vacant for several months. We eventually, over time, were able to make contact with the listed owner, a Pam Fletcher, who told our ordinance administrator that she'd been working with the county treasurer's office for some time and has just been unable to make it happen, to make repairs and keep the place. We asked her to register it, which she did not do, and again, we applied for and got an administrative warrant. As you can see, there's a lot of blight and it's rat infested, and there's a lot of serious code violations that render it uninhabitable, and so the C of O has been suspended, and so we're asking for your authority to engage in litigation if it's absolutely necessary to abate both of these situations.
Other questions incoming? Is there any way the county can let us know when there's no probate or no one to?
No one's even filed.
Yeah, no one's filed, so there's no records there.
So, and that's, I don't know how to address that one, we're going to have to get creative, right?
I don't either.
But as far as the one on Grove Road, I don't think you need the county treasurer to pick up that trash, right?
Yeah, we're not certain what the.
Issue is there?
What the type of engagement was between this owner and that office, it never was made clear to us, so we're not certain.
It'd only be for back taxes, right?
That's what I, my assumption would be, yes.
Questions or comments? Thank you for doing. The next item is yours, Michael.
This is also a request to authorize litigation for nuisance abatement, but these are both drug padlock cases. They are actually related, it's the same investigation, two different locations within Ipsilani Township, and these were both LawNet investigations assisted by our sheriff's cat team here in the township. First one is the Lake Point Apartments, it's the high-rise at Bridge near textile at 5900. Bridge Road Apartment Number 408, it turns out the target of the investigation had either rented it or caused it to be rented for his use, and it was completely vacant, no furniture and nobody living there, and being used as a stash house to manufacture and distribute crack cocaine, powder cocaine, heroin, fentanyl, and they also seized a loaded pistol on the premises of the property and drug trafficking equipment there. This is owned by Lake Point Trafalgar Limited Partnership in Bloomfield Hills. At the time, the police were hitting this door, they were also hitting the second door at 418 Villa Drive, which is the apartment community on La Forge Road, just south of Clark Road in Ipsilani Township, called Arbor One, owned by Arbor One Eighteen LLC of Ipsilani, which is a local company, Stuart Beal is the proprietor of the business. The target of the investigation was actually arrested at this location during that raid in the process of flushing methamphetamine down the toilet, and there was other evidence seized, as well as a loaded pistol, and criminal charges are pending from both of these raids on this same investigation. So this fits the criteria to apply under the state nuisance law to have these premises padlocked for up to one year if we convince the circuit court judge that that's the appropriate remedy, so these petitions were administratively authorized and filed, and we're asking for your formal authorization to continue forward with these cases.
Questions are coming?
I just comment, Madam Chair, I just want to put on the record to thank the LawNet team for busting both of these, might as well say dangers for sure.
Yes.
To our community as it relates to drug, I mean, drugs, I mean, he had, you know, I'm not going to repeat it, you pretty much said it, but it seemed like it was a lot of things going on over at the Bridge Apartment Complex, and obviously it carried on into Arbor One, so just wanted to say thank you because we don't need that in the community.
I will pass that along to them, thank you.
Have we ever done an apartment?
Yes, not, well, we did the small one, the small four-unit one on Parkwood.
That was four, yeah.
I don't, this may be the first larger scale apartment community, if memory serves. We've done so many of these now, we're up in the mid twenties, I think, or maybe more.
The next item is a request to adapt a recommended native plant species list for the bee population. If we do this, we get more points, we have to do certain things in order to be a designated bee community, and you get points for doing this, so I'm asking, I'm educating, asking education on plants, which I've learned a lot too. It just helps with our designation by doing that. Any questions? All right. The next two items are temporary road closures that we do. One is the Oberon 5K on June 21st, and the other one is 510K and the Kids Mile Run on October 12th. It's in the same location, Run Screen is the second one. I didn't know what, the first one talked about what, where they were giving the money to, the second one didn't, I don't know if that matters, I'm just interested, I don't know.
The first one, Oberon, says that they donated more than 18,000 to Friends of the Border to Border.
And the Karen's? And then the other one, it just didn't say.
The scream Run Screen, or?
I couldn't find it, but that doesn't mean it wasn't there. It just said that it, as you know, we give it to nonprofits.
But they didn't say.
Which is so good, yeah, I was just. Did they indicate to you, Lisa, or did I, anyway? If they're here, if not, it's still, people, I know people who attend this and they really, really like it. It says the race once again benefits a local charity, but I didn't know which one. That's great that they do. The next item is for amendment to the Washington County Brown Fund Redevelopment Authority Environmental Assessment Grant Agreement dated February 19th, 2019, for 1150 Midway, which is a skate park. Mr. Winters, would you like to add?
Yes, so this is basically an addendum to our follow-up to the previous Phase One that was paid for by the Washington County Brownfield in regards to the property of 1150 Midway. This is the location for the proposed skate park. As a result of the Phase One investigation, we had an internal meeting with the group leader for AKT Peerless, they're the ones who performed the Phase One. There's still a possibility, or at least they could not say with any degree of, they could not say with a conviction that we would like to hear that there was a possible fuel contaminants around the concrete pad there, which used to be a convenience store back when I was a child going, living in the village, and later on it was used by the community college. So we wanted to make sure that once that skate, the concrete pad is removed, that there would be no delay in completing the skate park, so we asked AKT for a proposal to perform a subsurface investigation, where they would go and take nine soil samples around the concrete pad. We went back to the Brownfield Bee Development Authority, and they actually said they supported 100%, they wanted to be proactive, and they also appreciated the township bringing this to the attention now as opposed to maybe running into something later. We don't think right now, we want to believe that it's going to be okay, but at the same time, because that concrete pad has to come out, we want to make sure there's no contamination. They did approve that request for the limited Phase Two subsurface investigation. Once you sign the contracts and retain AKT for that purpose, you will be reimbursed 100% of the funds needed for that investigation, along with the meeting we had with her to discuss her findings, so appreciate the efforts of the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and this project and other projects in the township, and I think that the skate park's going to be a very, very great recreational amenity to the township, and very excited about continuing that path forward.
Larry Doe also attended, right?
Yes, he did.
Okay, thank you Larry. You were there. Any questions, I mean? The next item's a budget amendment. One, the, it was for, we went out for bid for a truck for the hydro station, and this addresses the 20,745, and then the other one is for the road improvements or road maintenance for 304,357. And then finally, for authorization and bids, there were one, two, three, four, five, six bids that were reviewed, and the lowest, they range from 34,342 to 20,754, so they're recommending that we go with the MyDeal Van Dyke Ram for 20,754. So they're recommending that we go with the MyDeal Bandicam for $20,754. That's it?
Madam Chair?
Doug, do you have any... oh.
Sorry?
Does she have anything to end now, or do you want to wait to the meeting?
Attorney's report?
Your pleasure.
Yeah, we can do it now.
I was just...
Gotcha.
Thank you, when Mike was talking, because we spent a lot of time talking about neighborhood stabilization as being a stated policy of the township board. And I'm currently working on trying to have a circle. Years ago, Karen and I was talking at a board meeting one time, and we tried to show that, as the old saying goes, all roads lead to Rome. And there's a number of different avenues that we try and take to reach the center that will, so to speak, which is neighborhood stabilization. And some of the pathways we've talked about before, but I guess I can't overemphasize enough the enforcement by the Office of Community Standards when it comes to identifying and inspecting the vacant, blighted homes. There's nothing that is probably difficult to measure the impact that has upon anyone who's looking for a new home to purchase or relocate. They drive down the street, they see a house that is obviously blight in the front yard, side yard, backyard, broken windows, grass that's not been mowed. And I think the philosophy has always been to treat all these cases as if, you know, what would you want, what would you... how would you feel if you were living next door to this house? And you've seen some of the most difficult cases that we've come across here in the number of years in the last couple of weeks. And again, that is a major pathway to the neighborhood stabilization goal. Also, can I emphasize enough, these headlock cases. These last two, as Mike mentioned, they took place in multi-residential apartment units. And whether you own a home or you lease an apartment, there are many, many children who live in these apartment complexes with family members. They too have every right to expect to have a safe environment and a place to live, and should not be subjected to apartment owners who want to lease an apartment to a ghost tenant. I say a ghost tenant because if you don't have any furniture in your apartment and you're simply using it to cut up drugs and also contain fentanyl, which we all know has been a very powerful killer, and it's used to be mixed with heroin, when you're hiding money throughout the apartment complex and you have loaded pistols, that's not only unfair... that's not only unfair to the township, it's also a scourge upon the people, especially the children, who are subjected to the comings and goings in those apartment complexes. So those padlock cases have a high priority with the LawNet as well as with the township. And again, it's another pathway to trying to achieve neighborhood stabilization. We all know that we also are doing the multi-rental inspections, which goes hand and glove with achieving the neighborhood stabilization. We have to make sure that landlords, we welcome landlords who are going to comply with our building codes, but they have to be... have fire alarms, they have to have proper building codes that are up to date, and that's another important pathway. We spent a number of years also trying to buy as many homes as we could from the Washtenaw County Treasurer during our right of first refusal. In spite of the efforts of the county treasurer to thwart our efforts to do so, we've done that anyways, and we have acquired quite a few homes. I think the number is starting to dwindle down because there are fewer homes that are going into tax foreclosure. But all the houses that we actually acquired and resold to Habitat are on the... many of them have already been rehabilitated, and we've seen the before and after pictures. We've seen what can happen to neighborhoods when you increase the value of homes by investing in homes that have been either abandoned or vacated. We also know the importance of having a pilot program that benefits the residents of Clarkes Towers. The township board, a number of years ago, was faced with a very serious dilemma of what to do with Clarkes Towers. It had become a haven for a lot of unsavory and criminal activities, and we were virtually on the verge of revoking their pilot exemption ordinance because of what was going on in their building over there. And to the credit of the people that stepped up, they reinvested $12 million into Clarkes Towers. And I still remember the day we had that grand opening over there, or at least they had the grand opening. We were invited just to see what I think was a tremendous turnaround in the Clarkes Towers. Again, that comes about because of the township's commitment to try and make sure we have good senior housing. Because I think probably one of the biggest disappointments in my lifetime is to see how not only any community, but how this country treats the elderly and seeing that at times they're almost kind of like out of sight, out of mind, and that you have family members who really do what they can to make sure they're in a safe environment. And I think Clarkes Towers has done a great job of convincing us that our commitment to them was justified in turning around, or I think in fact, there may be a waiting list now to get into Clarkes Towers. I think there might be in that regard. So all these different pathways do lead to the central goal of neighborhood stabilization. So it's a phrase that might, at first glance, think of your own subdivision, but it goes much broader than that. It goes across the entire spectrum of all the types of diverse housing stock that we have here in the township. In regards to the skate park, I mentioned that we, Larry and I participated in the conference calls with Nathan Vogt, as well as some follow-up conversations with Megan Figglio. She's the deputy director of the County Parks, and we have a follow-up meeting scheduled to make sure that we can develop the best skate park that there is. We have... they have received seven bids from national design build teams across the country. I'm not sure if they've selected one just yet. I know they were meeting last week to evaluate those, but from my understanding, all seven of these design builders were extremely excited and extremely qualified to design the skate park. We still want to make sure we have a meeting of the minds in regards to what type of maintenance requirements we're going to have to follow, what types of steps we can take to make sure our liability is managed by... So we have meetings set up with the County Parks, the MML in our office to discuss this on May 15th. And then, of course, the never-ending saga of the Washtenaw Avenue easement for the reimagined Washtenaw. We are down to the one remaining easement. We had given the owner of Camelot through their attorneys basically a letter that I would kind of characterize as fish or cut bait, because we have pretty much danced that dance to the point where we are ready to move on without their portion being in the reimagined Washtenaw corridor plan. And so they did call, and they now have revised their easement in a manner that we believe we can go forward with as long as it's executed timely, as long as there's no further delays, and as long as we know what their expectations are for fees over and above the $7,500 that we have already paid or have committed to pay to the lender who requested that before they would consider that proposal. Kind of sticks in our craw that we have to pay anything only because this reimagined Washtenaw sidewalk project is a enhancement of pedestrian safety, maybe even, some would say even beautification of their property, and will be used by their tenants, their residents, and visitors. But we are so close to having that wrapped up that once we get their final information... I think Karen, as did myself, was also in a meeting with Tara Cohen and Nathan, where we thought maybe those costs could be rolled in to the grant application as part of a professional service component under the CDBG grant. So a lot of good things are happening simultaneously, but that kind of gives you a little bit of a thumbnail sketch as to what's been going on besides the creation of heroin.
Madam Chair?
Any questions are coming?
Just quickly, thank you, Doug. This is an unrelated report, but I just wanted to take time while we have a few minutes to say happy Teachers' Week to all of our educators in the community, and happy Nurses' Week to all of our nurses in the community.
Madam Chair, just a couple of comments. First, if it's okay. First, I just wanted to highlight that Ypsilanti Township's West Wall Park was actually featured in the SimCog video for our basically Parks and Recreation Regional Master Plan. So, yep, for the safe path to school. So you'll see West Wall Park, and they did a nice little aerial shot of it, which made it... it looks really nice. And then, secondly, I just wanted to acknowledge that there was a homebuyer seminar this weekend, and over 40 participants came out in order to get information about buying homes within our area and also around Washtenaw County. And then lastly, and this is sad, I wanted to... I wanted to acknowledge that unfortunately, Pete Murdock passed, so his family will be in our prayers, in my prayers for sure.
The legend. All right, and that concludes the work session, and it's 6:46, and we have to be back here at 7:00. Walk on.